Forty.
We're starting to get ramped up for sun. Or you're watching help?
Big party. Big party.
Yeah.
I tell you what, the older I get, I like watching quiet so I can hear. So I could, I mean, there were the days of like, oh, where are you watching the Super Bowl? I haven't watched the Super Bowl outside of my house in like ten years. Well, maybe more than that, because once the kids are.
Five just called in.
So it was like hassily getting the kids. We used to go places, try to hustle home at house time.
Yeah.
Well, who's online?
Why don't we just stay home a lot? And uh.
I'm planning.
I've never gone anywhere.
Okay, Kelsey, morning.
I operate in my camp.
Right.
There's my bathroom, there's my fridge, there's no outside noise. I can yell at the television and they hear me.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
It's really coming down, freezing right now.
Since my team.
It just started, yeah.
I just. I struck. I heard on the radio. And that's when my conversation. I was like, but I want to really stupid.
Yeah, that's what it said.
He's not interested, bro.
I brought you the bro. Okay, good morning, it's ten AM, we ask you if you're able to please rise or you'll be in a pledge of allegiance before we begin. Dear heavenly Father, we praise you for this February day that we can gather to have discussions, reach decisions. We want to be in accordance with your will. Our prayer today is that you will instruct us and give us the wisdom to lead us towards the best possible outcome. Give us the humility to seek your wisdom of our limited knowledge and the courage to follow where you lead us. We're grateful for your faithful presence in our lives. Lord, on Saturday, we'll recognize the National Boy Scout Day. For one hundred and fifteen years, scouts across our great land have been learning life skills, doing good deeds while developing the more foundations to be a success. Many presidents and other dignitaries have been scouts, including one hundred and eighty-one astronauts. We thank you for the scouts, the leaders, and the parents that all take the time and sacrifices for their youth. And may our hand, may your hand be upon us throughout our meeting this morning, these things we humbly bring to you in your name. Amen.
What would you do to the life of the United States of America? One nation, under God, individual liberty, justice for all.
Good morning, at this time, we'll convene the Commissioners' public meeting. And we'll ask for approval of amendments from previous meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
We have any public comment on agenda items only at this time?
On mine.
Okay. When I report, Nikki, morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, presented for your ratification, our invoice is due through February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, to be paid on February third, two thousand and twenty-five, in the amount of four million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-two cents. That's thirteen point six percent out of the general fund, point one eight percent out of Act thirteen, eighteen point three out of other grants, ten point nine one out of RMS, and fifty-seven point oh one percent out of escrow.
Okay. Their motion to accept the.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments for the controller? Are you in an all fair side?
Aye.
Next, I have a vote to approve the credit card cash requirement report of purchases from December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four through January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-one cents.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll reassess the Commissioners' public meeting for the salary board, meaning salary board this time.
The first item I have is vote to approve the salary board minutes from the January sixth meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item I have is vote to approve the following salary board actions. Delete one part-time victim witness coordinator adult and add one full-time victim witness coordinator physician. I would like to make a motion to table this. We did receive the grant award, however, the grant does not cover the entire cost, and we should discuss this further.
I believe it covered seventy-two percent. And then also the fringe benefits and legacy costs that would be associated with.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's not budgeted for two thousand and twenty-five, so we have questions for the district attorney.
Right.
On how those monies would be covered going forward.
Do you know, I need to speak for the district attorney, but were they surprised that it didn't cover the whole thing or?
I'm not gonna.
You don't know?
I don't know, no, I'm not sure.
All right, sir, did she make the motion or was she asking?
I made, I made the motion to table.
I'll second that.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. That position is going to be tabled at this time, feel free to notice. Okay, thank you, return the salary board this time, we convene the Commissioners' public meeting. No action, Mike.
Hey, good morning, long time listener, first time caller. Approve the following personnel actions as conditional officers of employment, up to the successful completion of background check and all other employment conditions outlined here in attachment A. The pre-release center Riley Hoy, resident supervisor, union position, full-time, nineteen dollars, twenty cents per hour, eighty hours per pay period with an anticipated start date February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The prison Joseph Broad, correctional officer, union position, full-time, twenty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The last one is an adult probation, prisoner Christopher Lavalley, adult probation officer, union, full-time, twenty-three fifty-three per hour, twenty-five hours per pay period with an anticipated start date March third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah, motion to accept these personnel actions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Questions or discussion? Are you in an all fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to know how long he's been waiting to use the, a long time listener, first time caller line.
Last night driving.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to action.
Have a good one, sir.
Five point one, Brooke.
Brooke, you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, good morning, Commissioners, I'm seeking your approval to amend the Palmetto posting contract from January first, two thousand and twenty-five, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight. This company is the company we use in tax claims to post the proceeds that are going up for sale. We have used them since two thousand and thirteen. Since two thousand and thirteen, the posting has been twenty-five dollars per posting. They amended the contract to increase it to two dollars and fifty cents more over the next four years. So what that means is in two thousand and twenty-five, the posting will be twenty-seven fifty. Twenty twenty-six, it will be thirty dollars. In two thousand and twenty-seven, it will be thirty-two fifty, and in two thousand and twenty-eight, it will be thirty-five dollars.
Okay. Your motion to accept?
I. I assume that we, like, do we have alternatives or is this, like, is this still the best, our best option?
This is the best option, they are from down south and we hired two people, they kept contract two people from the adult probation officer. And what the adult probation does, the ones that do it, they took two weeks of vacation to do this. They told me if we had been a new client, it would be thirty dollars for posting. This is the first time since two thousand and thirteen that they have raised the price for posting to two dollars and fifty cents more.
So they've raised the rates twelve years.
All right, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brooke.
Thank you, Commissioners, bye.
Thank you.
I am five point two through five point eleven.
Yes, I have a lock, good morning, everyone.
Yeah, good morning.
The first item I have for you is vote to approve the agreement with BSC Mechanical Incorporated. This is a contract for preventative maintenance for the boilers and water heaters, fully powered, located at the prison.
Okay. And a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item I have for you is a vote to approve the agreement with LexisNexis. This is an agreement for the prison to provide a law library and adequate legal assistance for the inmates as mandated.
Okay, this, and this comes out of the prison's budget?
Yes.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item I have for you is vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with William Neely. We're increasing his funds from twenty thousand to seventy thousand. He is providing the legal representation for the Troy Bailey murder case.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And that is in the two thousand and twenty-five approved budget?
Um, so twenty thousand dollars is, um, we are working with a public defender and working to figure out what the total impact's going to be as a result of this case. So we're going to be moving some monies around and working as needed.
Okay, thank you. All fair side?
Aye.
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 The next item I have for you is vote to approve the agreement with Josh Keister for professional services. He will be the crop specialist out of the county farm. He will be the scout for the crops, make sure on a bi-weekly basis that there's no issues with bug insects and damage to those crops.
And this is one of the first steps that are coming to us from the Farm Committee as we've been in different direction with our county farms. So we're excited about the recommendations they bring to us. And motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is vote to approve the agreement with EPC Technologies Incorporated, that this is to provide broadband consulting services. It's in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. So this is funded fifty thousand dollars by the Art Power Grant. The rest of those monies will be covered as part of the payroll convenience fund from Arca.
Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item, vote to approve the business rental preferred rate agreement with Penrac LLC, formerly known as Enterprise. This is just to provide offsetting of keepers mode of transportation for our travel needs or business travel needs.
Okay. Maya, you and your teams spend a lot of time on vehicles.
Yes.
We appreciate the savings that are brought to us. Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
The next item I have for you is vote to approve the bill of sales for the tractor and wagon and miscellaneous tools from Larry Beach in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. The valuation of property that is being sold and purchased is based off of fair market value, which is predictable market prices and factors.
Okay, this is some of the equipment from the farm that we're going to be utilizing in the future that we're purchasing from the county farmer, that was, was his. That will save us off of going out buying brand-new equipment. Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item I have is vote to approve the sixth amendment to the agreement with Citizens in Northern South. This is just to help offset the minimum balances in our general fund in the new RMS account that we created.
Okay, and this will be the last amendment, I hope?
I hope so.
Okay. Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, we want to thank Citizens Northern Bank for working with us daily basis, they've been great with us.
Oh, yes, very good.
Okay. All fair side?
Aye.
Okay. Five ten.
All right, sorry, I couldn't hear.
It's all right.
Vote to approve the agreement with Bruce Levy, MDCPE. This is an approved budget, this is for the public defender as well, and this is for the Troy Bailey case as well, too.
Okay, and that isn't a budget?
It is, yes.
And motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I believe five ten has been, five eleven has been tabled.
Well, here's what, I didn't know how you want to handle this, because there's uniqueness. So with this one, this is truly just the grant award for the victim witness. Now, I don't know if you want to do a partial approval, because the grant award itself is in an amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and one dollars. So, you know, as was alluded to, this part of salary board, a hundred percent of that is for the victim witness manager, which consistently has been funded by PCCD. Twenty percent for the juvenile victim witness coordinator. And then for the new adult victim witness coordinator, it would be seventy-two point seven-four percent. Again, does not cover any franchise, it's truly just for salary. But I didn't know if you, I didn't really know how you wanted to handle that, because it is a, the award is a selective package. And we have to, you know, we're mandated that we have to provide these services, at least with regards to Abby, which is a hundred percent paid for, and the juvenile victim witness coordinator, which is the twenty percent, which is Gabrielle Wise, she has consistently been on, you know, providing those services to. But again, if anything, I think we need to at least do that, you know, Abby, the victim witness coordinator, if you want to look at the twenty percent in the new position, that's up to you, but I'll leave that up for your discussion.
My only concern, Maya, would be is if, if we can break out the grant and accept it in part like that or.
I know. Because I don't think we can, you're right, that is my concern as well, because it is the.
We should probably table it until next week, until we can confirm that, and also confirm with the DA what's happening with that salary piece.
Is there a deadline on this acceptance?
Um, there really isn't, of course, they always say, you know, the student, so.
What her. Can we push it a week? What's that?
I was gonna say, it's retroactive to the fact that this should have been taken, we just got the approval and it's supposed to be for January first of two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, if we push it a week, are we in danger?
I don't think you're in danger, it's just limits your capabilities of recouping reimbursements for the salaries that they've approved.
That's what I use.
I would, I mean, I certainly, people think it's, I think it's riskier to push through without knowing than it is to table.
The minimal amount of salary that you might offset versus the difference in salary with the DA's victim witness coordinator seems to be risking that, accepting a grant that you know that that, that employee's salary and wages isn't fully compensated for at this point in time, probably outweighs that piece.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table five point eleven.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
So I'll be table one point five.
Yep, that's fine, um, should I be reaching out to the DA, is that something that your office will be doing, just to keep communication moving?
Salary board. Uh, we'll bring it to salary board Monday, if you can let him know.
Okay.
And he can be there?
Yep, I can do.
Okay, and Katie, too. So she handles her grants.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Maya.
Thank you. Hey, Ken?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Um, five point twelve is an agreement with Monitronics International for District Justice Building in Jersey Shore. It's for the fire or burglar access control video cameras, door intercoms system. What they do, it's the, it's the maintenance, it's the monitoring, it's the inspections, it's a pretty much a full, full access.
How long's the contract for?
Five years.
Five years. What would happen when the new building would be constructed?
It would switch over. Yeah, we have options to transfer that over to the new building.
Okay.
Or to terminate this and go with the new system that's in that building, which will probably, it's gonna have to be what happens, because I'm certain we will have many things built into the building that will allow us to drop some of these things. Now that it's building needs, not so much that it's needed in everyone, this is probably most advanced building we have with the equipment, has more equipment than all the other ones, just for a simple fact, the security's not built in how we would do it now.
Good. So this contract would fall over to the new building, and then we would talk to them about what we'd utilize and what we.
Yes, absolutely, okay.
All right, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Five point one three is an agreement with Port Elevator to do our five-year testing at courthouse. And what they do, that's the heaviest testing they do on all elevators, they actually do it loaded up with weights to its maximum weight and do a free fall to make sure that all the brakes and everything operates as it should, really thorough inspection.
Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Five point one four is generally the same thing with Port Elevator, except it's for my cycle.
It's also required by insurances?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. State actually requires all this stuff.
That makes sense, yeah. A motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five point fifteen, please.
Wait, we leak?
Morning Commissioners. I'm five point one five, seeking your approval for the amendment to the agreement with DCNR for the Greater Williamsburg Area Lee Finding Plan to extend the agreement through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. This is a no-cost time extension, and this is just to close out the grant and make minor revisions for DCNR's comments.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five point one six, Kelsey, still with us?
Yes, I'm still with you, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Kelsey.
Uh, for you today, I have the vote to accept funding of the LeComan County Chesapeake Bay Countywide Action Plan Implementation Grant. That's in the amount of five hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Five point one seven and one eight, Mark?
We work. All right, no, sir. Okay, five point one seven is a quest for a vote to approve an amendment to the original agreement with McNerney Page, Vanderlin and Hall. Send the agreement for Fred Holland as primary and Noah Rue as alternate to appear as the zoning hearing board solicitor for six months.
And motion to accept?
I will make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, five point one eight, looking for a vote to approve the Home Builders Show exhibitors contract with the West Branch Susquehanna Builders Association. We will be having a booth there to showcase and to provide information for development in the county. This is a unique instance, because they are not charging us this year. They're looking at it as public service and they're giving us the booth for no charge.
That's great. Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you for bringing this for free.
Fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Mark? Sorry, thank you.
Five nineteen and twenty, Shannon.
Morning, Shannon. Morning.
If five nineteen, the nominee committee for the LeComan County Planning Commission meant and made, is making a recommendation to the Commissioners to appoint the vacancy that they currently have with Garth Warmer, who's a resident of Loyes-Sot Township. And it would serve a four-year term, starting January first, two thousand and twenty-five, to twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank Mr. Warmer for your service.
And five twenty is vote to approve the, we've already awarded the contract to Shiloh Paving and Excavating in the amount of four million, three hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the Phase Two Williamsburg Crosspec rehabilitation project. This is just to ratify the agreement.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Take questions or comments? And then all fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Five point two one, Sal. You?
Good morning, Commissioners. As well, this is a vote to approve the memorandum of understanding with Armstrong Township for the Mosquito Valley Road Bridge Replacement Project. We kind of structured this similar to how we did bridge bundling with the county, the township reached out and asked if the county would be able to assist. The county, you know, you decided to be able to take lead on it. This agreement basically stipulates that county will put the money forward and then the township end up have a retro reimbursement agreement, so it lays out how the county will be reimbursed once the project is completed. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments for Sal?
No, I think, Sal, that's, this has been going on, this, this bridge is in bad shape for many, many years.
It's rated a four, it's been like a, from what Mark has told me, it's been a perennial issue, I think this is the most movement we've, we've had on it. The Water Authority is also looking at the memorandum between the township and the Water Authority for their component. Talking with them earlier this week, that should be finalized by their board, I don't want to speak out of turn, but plan on having that finalized by their board by the end of the month. And then next steps for us, we'll be getting the scope work finalized and, and everything over for review to be able to put things out for, for bid. So hopefully hereby, by summer, I think, is the plan to have a notice to proceed and have someone under contract to report the project, so.
And what percentage of the county's water supply is up that road?
There is a, I mean, there's a lot of infrastructure on there, it's one of the main axes, it's the only axis for about forty or forty-five residents. The Water Authority uses it to get deliveries for their facility. There's, I believe, two water lines that come through under the bridge. If the bridge were to go down or collapse or be closed, it would be bad. There's also gas lines that run under there as well to provide, provide gas utilities, so it's, it's definitely a, a structure that needs repaired, and I'm happy that we're finally able to move forward on it for sure.
I agree. Okay, motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Actually, you got the rest.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Matt. Uh, five point two two, vote to, seeking your approval to renew our spam filtering for another year in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, and this is in the budget.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, five point two three, seeking your approval to purchase a pager for JPO in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars. They have a pager today, it just broke, it wasn't working, it's about ten years old, this is just to replace it.
Okay, motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Five point two four, seeking your approval to refresh our firewall. This is a five-year refresh, and it is going to be for the courthouse and Department of Public Safety in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty cents, and it is in my two thousand and twenty-five budget.
Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Fair side.
Aye.
Five point twenty-five, seeking your approval to renew our firewall application. It's actually the software that runs on the firewalls in the amount of five thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-one cents, and that is in my twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Fair side.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Comments?
Ready? Um, no, I don't have anything special. Obviously, the Super Bowl Sunday, it seems there's a chance that the weather's gonna be sketchy. So, obviously, for people to be careful on the day because it's a day anyway. And with the Eagles in it, it'll be extravism here in Pennsylvania, so. But, you know, just keep an eye on the weather. Because right now, it's questionable. We'll say that.
Okay. Public comment? From the audience, any online?
None.
Okay, well, we've completed our agenda, so we'll be adjourned to February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you, everybody.